The time is now seven thirty. I'll call the meeting to order. Adequate notice of tonight's meeting has been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by the following methods. Through distribution of notice to the record, posting of agenda on the school district website, and through Parent Square. Sorry Dana, are we, we're good to go? Okay, thank you. Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Okay, Mr. Thomasovich, can we roll call, please?
Ms. Choi?
Here.
Dr. Mester?
Here.
Ms. Molina?
Present.
Mr. Parr?
Present.
Mr. Zepka? Mr. Segal? Ms. Thompson? Ms. Wilds? Vice President Melman? And President Lake?
President.
We have a quorum. Also in attendance is our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Gaidens, as well as our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Caramanos, as well as, as well as our two student reps, Emily Gelbod and Renee Kim.
Okay, that brings us to our first public comment section on agenda-related items. Anyone wishing to speak, please step up to the podium, provide your name and address, and you'll have a two-minute time limit. Anyone from the public? You will address that during board comment. Please let the record show at seven thirty-two, Mr. Segal has joined us. Okay, seeing no member. Okay, seeing no members from the public wishing to speak on agenda-related items, we'll move on to item E, public presentations.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody. Good evening. Happy Tuesday night. Tomorrow, the twentieth day of March, is the due date for the budget of the county. As a result, our board meeting was scheduled originally for next Tuesday, would move into this evening so that Mr. Thomasovich could give his comprehensive budget presentation. Thomasovich, floor to you.
It ran all the way through March nineteenth, so it's a long process. I'd just like to recognize, you know, Dr. Gaidens, our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Caramanos, our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, as well as our key administrators, stepping, you know, starting from the principals, all the way down to all the various directors, supervisors, as well as the Finance and Planning Committee. We basically, you know, was tirelessly, you know, a lot of meetings, a lot of deciding on, on, you know, what areas, you know, we wanted to put funds in, what areas the need is for, you know, for our students. So I'd like to start with that. The first thing is, is when we, you know, met as individually internal meetings, as well as, you know, with the finance and planning. The key thing that, that we basically address is our current mission statement of the district. So I would like to read it to everyone. Our district's mission is to provide schools that respond to individual needs and abilities, as well as our public's interest in the educated citizenry. We seek to inspire our students to develop their unique talents, to live productively, and to make a positive difference in an increasingly complex and interconnected world. In concert with home and community, knowledgeable educators will tailor rigorous programs that encourage relevant learning in humanities, arts, sciences, math, wellness, vocation, and technology. As a result of their experiences with our staff and within our schools, our students will learn to think clearly, critically, and creatively. So pretty much, I mean, the main goal of, of the budget is to provide the necessary resources for our students, and every student, to meet every student's needs within, you know, to provide the financial resources necessary. So just before we start, I'd just like to kind of go over, you know, what, you know, your public schools, what the facilities are, what, what is included in the staffing. So pretty much, we have five facilities. We have an elementary school, a middle school, and a high school, as well as an administrative building, as well as an annexed building. In addition, we basically transport roughly forty resident students are, are being transported in district, you know, by our in-district transportation, as well as five hundred and thirty non-resident students are being transported, as well as by our in-district transportation department. We roughly have about twenty-seven buses and vans that we utilize. Staffing is roughly over three hundred and seventy-five full-time and part-time employees. We have pretty much a little over two thousand on-roll students in district with fifteen, twenty resident students. And that's basically as of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, the last ASSA count. As well as athletics, we have roughly twenty-nine sports, forty-three teams, forty-eight coaches, one athletic trainer, and over about seven hundred student athletes. In addition, we have fifty co-curricular clubs and activities, and we're always looking to expand in that area. So before I start into the different, you know, what's included in the budget, in the, in the district's budget, pretty much, there's three funds that are, that encompasses the district's budget. The first fund is the general fund. Pretty much, this is the main fund of the district, and it accounts for all expenditures of the district for current, based on current expenditures. Expenditures included here are regular program instruction costs, as well as administrative and other support costs related to providing the district normal operations. In addition, you'll find capital expenditures, if they relate to capital projects, as well as capital equipment also recorded in this fund. Special revenue fund, that's pretty much any grants that we got, whether it's a local grant, state or federal grant. That has to be accounted for in a separate fund, accounted for individually based on the grant. So that, you'll see, you know, our special revenue grants that we're basically anticipating for next year. And then the last piece is the debt service fund. This fund is, is basically, if, if a district goes out and approves a referendum, the payment of that debt, that long-term debt, is accounted for in the debt service fund, which debt service fund has a separate tax levy, the general fund has a separate tax levy. Special revenue fund doesn't have any tax levy, pretty much, the grants, revenue coming in from grants are offset with grant expenditures. So these are, I just wanted to highlight some, you know, key budget area focuses in this budget, which I'll go, you know, over every line briefly. I'll put that up, but these are the key trigger points that we had to basically identify when we had internal meetings, as well as our, our committee meetings, to figure out, you know, where the funds are going, as far as expenditures and revenues. So I'd just like to point out, the overall total budget is a decrease of roughly one point six million. So that includes general fund, which is an increase of about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, roughly less than two percent. Special revenue fund, there was a huge decrease. As you know, COVID grants are coming off, they cannot be realized. So these are pretty much reoccurring grants that we were able to anticipate next year. In addition, the debt service fund, there was a decrease of about one point three million. This was the result of a bond maturing in twenty-three, twenty-four. The other piece relating to district-wide is considering enrollment changes for twenty-four, twenty-five. As you know, part of our state aid reduction was, was tied to pretty much resident enrollment, which pretty much trickles into on-roll students enrollment. So there was an anticipated decrease of about eleven students. On-roll is basically students that are residents, that are attending one of our, you know, three schools in Leonia, as well as our send-receive relationship with Edford. In addition to other LEAs that come in district, paying, whether it's a, a paying parent, or it could be another LEA for a special ed program that we're able to provide a need for, we could bring in that tuition revenue. So when that all encompasses it, we're envisioning an increase, I'm sorry, an increase of eleven students, I just said decrease. The next piece is the revenues. So the changes in revenues, here's the key, key areas where we identified decreases, increases that, that basically offset our expenditures. So the first decrease, I would like to point out, in the, in the general fund, well, actually in the total, when we compare to debt service, is the total tax levy decrease of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. So that's encompassing general fund tax levy, as well as the debt service tax levy. When we combine the two together, total tax levies decreasing for next year for the, for the taxpayers. And as a result, later down the road, I'll get into what that means and the impact it means on the average assessed home in, in Leonia. The next area is the decrease in state aid, which I pointed out, that was, two parts were, were due to this decrease. It was mainly due to resident enrollment. The state projects our resident enrollment for next year. Based on that projection, it, it included a decrease, as well as they, they look at equalized value and district income from the last census. They fact in those two areas, compared, compared to the adequacy budget. And when they, when they basically compare those numbers together, they basically stated that Leonia public schools required a decrease in state aid, about four hundred and seven thousand. The next piece is tuition revenue. This comes pretty much from our enrollment numbers from Edgewater, as well as other, other LEAs and parent paid. And this is based on certified tuition rates that we approved. So that's a basically an increase of one point four million. The next piece is an increase of transportation revenue. That's about twenty-nine thousand. That comes from any agreements that we have from other LEAs, which right now, there's currently two agreements I can anticipate. It's the, basically, the transportation agreement we have with Edgewater Public Schools, as well as Ridgevale Park. The next piece is an increase of miscellaneous revenue. That's pretty much all the buckets that fall into that line. It could be extra revenue, it could be use of facilities. That's pretty much, we're anticipating an increase of about seven, sixty-nine thousand. Next piece is excess surplus. That's a decrease of twenty-five thousand. That was basically presented from our order of the last meeting. That was basically at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three's fiscal year. We basically had about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we were able to bring back to the taxpayers, which was a slight decrease from the year before, twenty-five thousand. The next piece is a huge decrease. It's the capital reserve withdrawal. The reason why this was a huge decrease, as you know, there's a lot of projects going on. So the plan for next year is, we, you know, we want to complete these current projects before we start, you know, securing funds for other projects. We want to make sure that these projects are completed. So that's a decrease of about one point four million. The next piece is the withdrawal from maintenance reserve. That's an increase of about two hundred and twenty-three thousand. The next area is special revenue grants, which is highlighted above. That would pretty much offset with grants that we were able to appropriate next year, which the decrease was due to non-recurring grants relating to COVID. As far as the expenditure side, to offset some of those changes in revenues, the huge, there was an increase in special ed costs, which, you know, it keeps all districts. One of the areas that they're kind of facing year in, year out is increase in special ed instruction, as well as some of the related services, as well as extraordinary aid, to support the needs of those, of those students that are identified in the IUC. So that's basically an increase of about a hundred and eighty-one thousand. There's also an increase of district athletic cost, which was fifty-four thousand. An increase of out-of-district tuition, which is another factor facing all districts. So our special service director, Ms. Russo, you know, she has done a great job in trying to bring some of these out-of-district students in, and trying to provide the appropriate program to service these students. So we're looking at about four hundred and eighty-eight thousand increase, as a result of those, those tuition rates increasing, as well as increase in out-of-district students. The next area, which I highlighted, was increase in guidance of student services. That was basically roughly about forty-three thousand. There was a decrease in general administrative cost, which was three eleven. To keep in mind, when, when we present the budget, it's always based on modified. So in these modified numbers, it has legal costs associated with pending legal claims that we either appropriated this year, or it could be rolled over from the prior year from an open P O. So that's why I wanted to just highlight, in general, that three eleven is not a decrease per se in the general operations of our general administration. It was just previous secured POs that we had for the pending legal claims. The next area, which is another factor affecting all districts, is health benefits, as well as other benefits. So this is the total of all employee benefit lines. That was an increase of about four hundred and ten thousand. That includes health benefits, FICA, fourth share of pension contributions relating to persons, DCRP. The next two areas is, which I pointed out, the withdrawal from capital projects. Capital reserves is a decrease in capital projects, one point three, as well as a decrease in debt service payment of about one point three million. So those, both those sizes is how we got to a balanced budget. So I'd just like to, you know, give some statistical information relating to state aid. So just kind of, you know, the prior, past ten fiscal years. As you see from twenty sixteen to roughly nineteen twenty school year, it's been flat. The reason why then it's kind of spiking and changing, that was due to the CEFR Act being in effect by the state. So what happened is, once that CEFR Act came into effect in nineteen twenty, it was basically calculated differently based on, you know, resident students, as well as, they call it local, you know, district local share. So you'll see, you know, from twenty-one, there was a huge spike in, in resident enrollment, and that's based on projected. And then there's a decrease, you know, for next year. The next area as far as statistical is Leonia residents, that you'll see from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five, which kind of ties into the state aid increases. You'll see from pretty much twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty-two, there was an increase in Leonia residents that we reported on our ASSA count in October. And then there's a slight decrease with a kind of tailoring off a little bit, remaining flat. As far as Leonia Edgewater, I like to always compare, you know, what the impact, obviously, because with Edgewater, there is two hundred and dollars coming in based on the amount of students we have on-roll, as well as Leonia on-roll students. All those, those two buckets, you know, obviously affect the, the needs of those students and drives the, the cost of the whole, you know, entire budget. So as you see here, pretty much from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-five, Leonia and Edgewater kind of had a similar pattern as far as increases in overall enrollment, with Leonia decreasing slightly, and for next year, Edgewater increasing enrollment. And this is obviously for Edgewater at seven to twelve. So as far as summary of funds, roughly, the general fund is about forty-two million of the total budget. Special revenue is about seven hundred and nineteen thousand. Debt service is one point two million. So in total, the total appropriations is forty-four, almost a little shy of forty-five million. As far as the revenues, which I kind of pointed out with increases and decreases, these are the six main buckets that districts can generate revenue, which you'll see tax levy, federal aid, state aid, and tuition in Leonia, because of our sending-receiving relationship with Edgewater. Those four buckets drive the budget. Rents, royalties, miscellaneous revenue are kind of, you know, are small amounts that really don't drive too much of the budget. Reserve withdrawals and surplus could drive the budget. Like last year, we have a lot of capital projects that we're funding through reserves rather than increased taxes. So this is, these are all the lines in the budget. So I highlighted, obviously, the key changes. Anything over four percent is what I presented to everyone. So this is basically, overall, we went from twenty-three, twenty-four, about forty-two million, to forty-two million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, which was the increase of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, which was a little shy of two percent. What I did was I backed off the prior year encumbrances to give you a more adequate, accurate picture. If I threw the encumbrance in there, it would kind of show that the budget, you know, that it almost remained flat, which is, which isn't completely accurate. So as I pointed out, the general fund revenue analysis, as you see here, taxes make up fifty-six percent, which, you know, obviously drives the budget, state aid, as well as, as well as if there's any federal sources. One of the federal sources in the general fund that we could bring in is basically our semi, is basically our semi. So those, basically, that's about thirteen percent, and then tuition's about twenty-five percent. The other bucket, as you see, is pretty much five percent. So the special revenue programs that are in this budget, that are constantly recurring, that we could anticipate for next year, typically speaking, when the grants come out, we always finalize the numbers. And you'll see resolutions on the agenda once we get the final numbers, approving those final grant awards. So pretty much, we have all the titles, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Title Four, that's all under ESSER. It used to be NCLB in the past. And then we have IDA grants. Those are pretty much for our special need students with additional resources that meet those needs, and then in addition, Perkins Grant. These are the grants that we had previously from COVID, which aren't reoccurring. So we had ESSER two funds that kind of trickled into twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, which pretty much ESSER two ended this past September. Now we're kind of spending down and finalizing all the expenditures relating to the ARP ESSER trade. So that's going to run all the way till September twenty twenty-four. As far as special revenues, as you see here, it's a decrease of one point one million. This is driven by grants. So as grants, as we secure grants in the future, we could always appropriate it mid-year. So this is one fund that is flexible. As grants come on, we can basically secure the grant funding, and then the budget gets modified. Debt service, as you see here, it basically dropped almost fifty percent, a little bit more than fifty percent. So it went from two point five million to one point two million. One of the bonds matured, so we have one bond left. So that was the driving factor in why the taxes decreased. As far as appropriations, I like to kind of go over, you know, what is included in appropriations. As you see here, there's four buckets in appropriations, so pretty much instruction is, is the larger of the bucket. That's tied directly to instruction of students, whether it's regular, which is general education, special education, other instruction, and school-sponsored activities and athletics. Then we have our support services. Those are tied to, it could be counseling, it could be our child study team, any of the related services, media. In addition, we have general administration, school administration, central services, plan and operations, which is, you know, all our, our maintenance lines, and student transportation. The next piece is capital outlet. That relates any capital, minimum capital projects. And then the last piece is debt service. As you see here, it's tied to a referendum. These other three are pretty much tied in, in the general fund. So this is the general fund appropriations. This is the other side. So as you see here, it's balanced. This also increased seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, and these are all the lines that reflect that, that increase. So which I kind of went over the, the highlighted areas. Anything over four percent, I kind of pointed out. I like to kind of, in the budget, another big part of the budget, salary and fringe benefits, including health benefits. Salaries is directly tied to bargaining agreements, tied to employee contracts. Health benefits is obviously tied, we're part of the state health benefit plan, so it's tied to the rates set by the state. As you see here, pretty much, those buckets represent about eighty, a little over eighty percent of our total general fund budget. Special revenue, these are the appropriations, which you'll notice, same level. Grants on one side matches the grants on the other. Debt service, this is basically how the debt is, is basically funded. Interest in bonds decrease fifty-nine thousand, and the principal amount decrease one point two six million dollars. So that was the offsetting revenues. So next piece is capital equipment and projects overview. I like to kind of go over, you know, some updates of the projects that we're doing, some equipment, and what's in this budget. So as you see here, I mean, if you, you know, in my, in my VA report, you'll notice that there is constantly, these projects are, you know, constantly giving updates. As far as the ACS roof replacement project, that's going, that went out, that's advertised to go out to bid. Replacement of five exterior doors, that's also recently advertised to solicit bids, where, where have replacement of various interior exterior doors at LHS, replacement of electrical secondaries at LHS, ADA unisex bathroom at LHS, mitigation drainage projects at LHS and LMS, media center project at LHS, seven EV chargers and buses, installation of, of the BOE multipurpose conference room technology, that's an equipment line, as well as installation of UPSs for the district's data center service at LHS. So these are all projects that we secured funding, and we're in the process of completing it, possibly before the end of the year. A lot of these projects will be completed over the summer for next year. As you see here, the ACS roof, that's tied to a Roth grant, which we're getting forty, roughly forty percent. Some of the other projects are tied to IDA insurance, insurance recovery, as well as some FEMA proceeds that we were able to get for mitigation, as well as New Jersey EP grant for the seven EV chargers and buses. What's in this budget, you'll see, there's a line, which was an initiative of the district, was to install bus cameras in all district transportation vehicles. So that's in that, this budget. Additional smart boards was, was identified in all three schools, which basically after the, after these small amounts of smart boards, every class will have a smart board. In addition, replacement of maintenance vehicle with a plow. Basically, the useful, the current one is at its end. And then there's lease payments of LHS turf field, which is pretty much the approved shared agreement of the borough, in addition to the technology infrastructure. So if you take a look, long-term debt, I like to kind of project out what the debt's going to look like. So as you see, pretty much, we had the, the drop-off this year, and then the debt will be pretty much flat with some small increases, much up to twenty, thirty, thirty-one, which is when this bond matures. As far as capital financing agreements and leases payable, this is everything that we have currently approved and contracted with. We have the turf field, tech upgrade, district phones, waterfall, the posting machines, copiers, iPads, IMAX. So you'll see this, the same thing over the next life of these leases. You'll see that it goes from seven hundred and thirty thousand, and then it starts decreasing heavily in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And you'll notice the decrease, and I'll point out, like, the copiers, that's going to be something that's going to get renewed. So once it kind of comes off the books in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, new copies will come on the books to kind of replace those copies. So some of these lease agreements will be replaced with new lease agreements. Taxes over here, so I like to save the best for last. So it's like, you know, like a movie, the best part is the, the end, so like I said before. So pretty much, there's two factors. School districts run on a, on a fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. The borough, when, when taxpayers get their taxes, it runs on a calendar year. So I like to kind of point out how it's going to affect on the school year, how's it going to affect the taxpayer on a calendar year. So as you see, twenty-four, twenty-five, as I mentioned earlier, taxes are going down. Roughly, these are obviously proposed tax rates based on equalized value. So it's gone from one point nine seven to a little, from two, a little over two million, two percent, to one point nine seven percent, which represents about a hundred and forty-eight dollar decrease over the, I mean, the school year. So July, June, June thirtieth, your taxes should go down about a hundred and forty-eight. If you're in that assessed value range of four hundred and forty. If you're, if your home is valued more, obviously, it'll, same thing if your home is, is valued less. So it's always based on assessed value. So if you take that percentage increase on your assessed value, that's what you're, you're going to be saving. So as far as the calendar year, as you see here, some of the tax levy is raised one half of, of the calendar year, and then the other, some of it's raised the second half of the calendar year. So as you see here, the tax rate for the calendar year is still decreasing. It's going from one point nine five seven to one point nine three eight, which represents a decrease of eighty-four dollars. The reason why the decrease is less, more of our debt service levy is raised over the summer, because that's when the debt is due. That's when the principal payment is due over the summer. So that's the reason why some, the levy is raised in, in, pretty much from July to December twenty-four. So as far as the budget schedule overview. So we're at this point presenting the preliminary budget tonight. The next step, as Dr. Gaiden's pointed out, we're going to submit it to the county. I had basically tomorrow, so once, you know, the board approves that resolution, I can send everything off to the county. Typically, the March twentieth is when the board had to approve the preliminary budget. My goal was to have it. Uh, my goal is to have it tomorrow or by the end of the week. Uh, the county pretty much has a month to get back to me to kind of sign off on the budget. Pretty much these numbers, um, prior to the, the county doing their official review, it has to run through, uh, pretty much the state software, budget software. So all these numbers basically, uh, ticked and tied, and it's all in compliance with the state requirements, uh, which allows me to submit it to the county. Uh, advertise of the notice of the public hearing will be going out anticipated April twenty-sixth, and then we're looking to have the public hearing on Tuesday, April thirtieth, at seven-thirty. Um, and I just pointed out some other dates to keep in mind. Last day to hold the public hearing, if need be, would be Monday, May seventh, if we wanted to change that April thirtieth, um, as well as due to the county on or before, uh, Monday, May twentieth, is the, is the final dates. And we did get some input in here, uh, she does give her floor of approval on the budget, so you can feel confident. She signs off on it. And I'll open it up for questions, uh, and answers.
Yeah, why don't we start with board questions first, and we will open the floor to the public to ask questions as well?
Just to clarify, the hundred and forty-eight savings of, of the school year, that savings only for the school budget, has nothing to do with the municipality?
Correct.
But if they're going down a hundred and forty-eight, then it's three hundred dollars saved. If they go up a hundred and forty-eight, no saving.
Correct.
So I just, this is independent from the.
Correct. Correct. Your total taxes have different buckets. Um, this is only one piece of the bucket, which is tied to the school's taxes.
Now, other things, thank you for highlighting the eighty-two percent. I just wanted to note that, like, that eighty-two percent, that's only paid salaries and benefits, right?
Correct. So this, what I did was it's salaries, benefits, um, as well as anytime we, we have a salary, we obviously got to kind of match, we got to pay for the FICA, uh, depending on what pension they're in, we got to obviously contribute to their pension, um, unless they're in the TPAF. But this is basically, um, pension and FICA tied to non-TPF people are included in this number.
So we, just looking at this number, fair to say, majority of our money goes in our personnel.
Correct.
And their benefits.
Correct. So I mean, like, the, the key thing is, um, any board members, um, negotiation committee is obviously very important. Anytime we, we settle an agreement, individual contract, that's basically, you know, drives these, these salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board member questions?
Um, so the bond that matured this year, um, I don't have the exact refunding date, but that was, that was previously from an old referendum. Um, I don't have that information, but it was basically one bond that matured, and then we have one bond left on the, on the books, which is. Which is here. This is the twenty-twenty refund that was done previously beginning in district. Um, I mean, the requiring, there is a state requirement that over, uh, once the bond hits a certain amount of years, the district is required to look at refunding the saved money. So, um, this bond doesn't look like it's a refunding bond. I'm just looking at it, but it could be, I'm not entirely sure. So this is the only bond that's currently on the books going forward. Refunding is if you issue the original bond, let's say we do a referendum, we issue the debt, um, so that bond is basically, the initial bond is, is issued, and then over a certain amount of time, usually bonds have a life base, uh, relating to the project. If the useful life of the project, let's say, is twenty, twenty-five years, that allows us to issue a bond for twenty-five years to pay back. So over, um, I believe it's seven or eight years after that point, the district can refund if the issue, interest rates go down to save the interest portion of that.
Yeah, about the impact of the, uh, what of the salaries. Um, do you have any of that kind of idea of who cares if, like, the district president or, because we are by any percent, you know, how other districts does it, like, how does it affect the budget?
Um, I don't have the numbers. Uh, what I can say, the majority of the districts, salaries and benefits drive all budgets. So when there was an, an issue with health benefits increasing fifteen percent last year, which you'll notice, uh, the health benefit cost, uh, here, that's projected out based on our insurance broker, he said you could reduce it to twelve percent. He was comfortable with twelve percent. That's why you noticed that employee benefit line didn't increase as much as last year. Um, that is the driving factor of all districts, salaries.
Eric, I just wanted to confirm, a copy of the presentation will be made available to the public as well?
Yes, I'll post it in a moment.
Any other questions from the board members? Okay, we'll open the floor to the public for questions from the public regarding the budget presentation. Anyone from the public?
Yeah. First of all, Arthur's at one twenty-five relative. Um, I thought the presentation was excellent, was detailed, and had, and explained the things that need to be explained. Of course, I'm happy with the, uh, the reduction, uh, to the taxpayers as a result of the, uh, careful assembling of this budget. Um, one thing I noticed, or a couple of things I noticed, the tuition rate went up, uh, apparently generating additional one and a half million dollars. All this is round numbers. Yet we're only showing eleven student increase year over year. So how did you get one and a half million dollars out of only eleven kids whereby the tuition is only sixteen thousand, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a year? Did we, the rate go up a lot? Did the state allow us that that formula to go up? That was, so, that was one. Let me, let me get them all out, and then you can answer them. Um, the out of, out of district tuition also went up. Is that all tied together the same thing? That was, went up a hell, almost a half a million dollars. Uh, student enrollment, there was a chart that showed it was flat for a number of years, and then it had a steep increase, was one of your earlier charts. Uh, and then it tended to stay flat and then dropped down, was a, was a, was a graph. Where, the increase, where, do we know where the increase in students came from? It was like almost a hundred students, I'm just eyeballing it real quickly. Uh, it was before that one, that one. Um, where did that increase from eighteen to twenty-two, in the numbers of students going from around four, the low fourteen hundreds to just under fifteen-five? That's, that's quite an increase in students. I don't know where all that, that came from. You may not know the answer, that might have been before you. And final question is the debt service, uh, that matured, giving us a, a million and a half dollars in relief. I've been hot on that, that was one of the things that I emailed you privately about which, which, uh, loans were maturing, uh, in the past, under previous administrations. And, um, that money was always presented as candy, more, okay, that we're going to have more money to spend for things we can do, it was really poor planning. Uh, do we have any, uh, leave that off for now? I know you have to bond what you have to buy, uh, in many cases, not all the time, but in many cases. Is there anything down the road within the next couple of years where you go, okay, we got all this, we got a million and a half dollars in relief, we can spend it again? Uh, so the question is, do we have any of that? And, uh, third, and finally, the preponderance of expenses, either salaries and expenses for employees and the cost of running the buildings, that's probably eighty percent or ninety percent of your, your budget. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so the tuition revenue, what drove that, that large increase, is bas- basically certified rates. So what I do is, and this is all my colleagues and, and recommendation by our auditors, is to base it on the most recent certified rate by the state. So obviously, you know, we're, you know, since COVID, um, expenditures have been increasing dramatically since, you know, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. So we're getting into a more, uh, stable expenditure, uh, level. Uh, so hopefully, uh, the certified rate should kind of be close to the previous year. So with that being said, what happens is the state requires us, uh, when we receive a student from another LEA, uh, similar to, you know, Edgewater, part of our sending-receiving agreement, as well as any other LEAs, we always have to true it up two years later. Um, so that was also another factor in that increase. It's catch-up. Correct. So we, we kind of take the conservative approach, um, because we don't want a huge deficit. So if I say, hey, you know, tuition rates are going to go up three percent, four percent, or if I base it on my budget, um, because once I put the numbers in, this, you know, the state kind of puts out, if you spend everything in your budget, you're, they give you what your, uh, projected rate's going to be. But if I project it too high, then what's going to happen is we're going to get hit with deficit. Now we got to come up with this money. So it's conservative. Correct. So some districts, what they do is they have tuition reserve, but in order to have tuition reserve, you got to get the funds from somewhere. So it's, you know, um, so that's part of it. The other thing with out of district, same thing, so we sit down with our special service director, Ms. Russo, um, we obviously have students that are currently being sent out, so we anticipate, are they going to still be sent out? Can we bring them back? As well as, um, she had constant meetings with parents, um, including attorneys, uh, to support these needs of, of current students in district. So there is some in district students that are, uh, potentially and highly likely that they're going to be sent out. I think the numbers, uh, roughly, we, this year, we have a roughly about seventeen, eighteen students being sent out. Um, in this budget, I'd want to say it's about twenty-two. Um, each student, uh, same thing, the rates come from, uh, kind of comes from the state approved, uh, private schools for the disabled. They kind of set their rates in conjunction with, with the state, um, as well as other LEAs. So those rates obviously drive, you know, those rates accordingly. Uh, roughly, a student being sent out is anywhere, uh, for special, obviously special needs, is anywhere from seventy to a hundred thousand, not including transportation.
Not including, sorry to cut you off, if they need a aid.
Correct. That doesn't include any related services that we know.
So that, that seventy is low.
Correct.
Because you add, you add transportation, and if they need a one-to-one aid, you're able to that easily.
Correct.
So any, any new population family that moves in, if they have a child with need, that goes two hundred thousand, just that one.
So, correct. So if Jenna knows that they're currently getting a one-to-one aid, right, Ms. Russo, um, then we obviously will project at that cost, but that's why when we finalize the numbers that our auditor presented last board meeting, and he said that you were able to, you know, generate X amount of dollars, you were able to transfer back into reserve, because these are all based on projections. So let's say those twenty-two students, it drops down to nineteen, that's additional funds that we could potentially move into a reserve, or it would be extra circle back to the capital. This, I'm not sure, I mean, obviously it's residents, so it's, it's, it's students, uh, based on our ASSA, it's resident students that are currently, uh, being registered with, uh, Leonia during these years. I don't know what drove from eighteen to twenty-one, I don't know if there was, I don't think there was a huge development.
It was.
Okay.
And, and they also talked about, I remember a few years ago, they talked about, um, lots of older families who sold their houses, and lots of young families moved in, and who finally like to scale with it.
And just keep in mind, this resident doesn't include students going to low tech, which is always an issue. So state aid is based on residents, low-tech students, uh, students that are, you know, accepted to Bergen County, uh, Bergen County academies, uh, or one of the other technical schools, those students aren't considered residents, so they're not, we don't get state aid for them, but they're part of our tuition book, because I got to pay, I get a bill. Yeah, so, just.
How many, I, I didn't hear of that. How many, um, students do we have that go to different schools?
Uh, we have roughly, I want to say around twenty-two, twenty-three, and obviously it's nine through twelve.
Right, right.
We have to transport those students. That's another thing.
It's not transportation.
Well, Edgewater's responsible. So if there's a student being sent out of the district, and it's an Edgewater resident, um, we would discuss it with their special service director, their FDA, and then what happens is, we don't claim it as enroll. Um, Edgewater would, would base it, claim it as being sent, and then they take directly to the out of district or low tech. Um, but part of our transportation agreement, we do transport those students.
And Eric, if I may, just to add some more color to the students who go to the county schools. Not only do the local districts pay a percentage of cost to the county schools, but on top of that, that's covered also in the county taxes that you pay.
Correct.
So you pay as an individual, then you pay as a tax, as a school taxpayer.
Yeah, correct. So, so the, um, Bergen County schools, roughly, the, the tuition rate is anywhere from, I want to say it's like eleven thousand. So they kind of reduce it, like Dr. Gaines said, because they generate levy from the county. Um, if it's, if it's a technical school that they provide some type of special ed program, um, it's about twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand. And then obviously, Bergen County, uh, special services, students are going to those schools instead of, you know, a, a private school. And then, oh, and the debt, um, we do, I mean, part of our strategic planning for next year, we will look into projects, so, so what happened was last year, I kind of budgeted all these projects for needs, uh, to kind of submit it to, you know, for rod grant. So the goal is now, uh, some of those funds will go back, uh, some of those funds will be, uh, allocated to a project that we didn't get rod grant funding, right? And as well as some other projects that, uh, we anticipated a need, like the ADA bathroom at the high school, there was a need there, so some of those funds will be allocated to that project, which our architects in the process of getting some of these projects approved, advertised for bid, uh, so we're in that, that's.
And that's actually part of the reason for the strategic planning, to, to give the public more of a voice in terms of, um, not only, you know, physical improvements for the school district, but, you know, everything that, that goes into the decision-making that happens for the schools, so that we set and establish a guide for the next five years. Um, so we're really looking forward to that, and, and we really looking forward to the public providing their input. Um, obviously, the board meetings are opportunities for the public to speak. Um, the board members are also always available, as well as superintendent, assistant superintendent, the entire board office, really, but the strategic, strategic planning is going to be important in terms of setting forth, you know, the vision for the school district moving forward and getting buy-in from all stakeholders within the borough, not just families that have kids in the school district, but taxpayers, um, the, you know, our, our local government, you know, their representative here tonight from the council, the council, police department, fire department. Um, it's really supposed to be a comprehensive plan that, that will, will be our, you know, guiding light as we move forward in the next five years, once we have that plan put together. So I very much, I expect you fully, Arthur, to be involved with that process. I would be really remiss if. We'll move as quickly as we can. Thank you.
And to add to President Lee, I mean, that's why that mission statement that we have currently, that'll potentially get updated through the strategic planning, um, that drives the budget. So we look at, you know, that's the vision of the district, that's where the funding could be allocated to, that's, you know, if we wanted to add additional funding, you
Any other questions from the public, or any other additional comments from the board? Okay. Mr. Thomas, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our next item, item F. Um, any comments from the board or our student representatives on agenda-related matters? Okay, seeing no comments from the board for our student representatives, we'll move on to item G, approval of consent agenda items. Uh, can I have a motion? Uh, Mr. Park, and a second, Ms. Wildes, and that's our call, please.
Ms. Choi?
Yes, except for item LS, I recuse myself on voting for LS.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yes, on the, something, anything that's ECS, and also under finance, L.
Oh, it's finance, L?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Zepka, uh, Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Mr. Segal? Ms. Wilds? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on this agenda.
Thank you.
That brings us to administrative reports.
I only have two items tonight that I want to, uh, highlight. We gave a report last week, and I wanna recognize the hard work that Eric, uh, did tonight for the, uh, the budget presentation. The, the budget preparation never really ever stops. Never stops, right? You take a bit of a break, but always putting that together. And I have to give credit to, to, to the team in the board office for collecting all the information, for working with the schools, for getting everything together, and for the diligence that is put into that. So thank you very much for that presentation. As was pointed out by the audience, the comprehensive nature of the presentation deserves to be recognized. Um, so I, I think that Mr. Thomassevich is having the greatest week ever. He had a great order report last week and a great presentation tonight. Hope to get that man a Stanley Cup. Um, I do wanna point out, too, if you look at letter P on the agenda, um, under LP, accept the local donation by the estate of Robert and Gertrude Sokolsky of a Baldwin Baby Grand piano valued at ten thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna make more mention of this in an upcoming meeting, but I wanna, I wanna go into the public record now and talk a bit about that piano and how it came into our possession. Um, a personal friend of mine reached out to me, and he said that his mother-in-law, who was Gertrude Sokolsky, had this Baldwin Baby Grand piano, and would they like to, uh, they don't want it just to have it to be disposed of, they wanted to, to have it donated. So, uh, Kerry Dunn, Mr. Dunn, who's one of our music teachers, went to the house, and it's a beautiful, beautiful equipment, piece of equipment we have. The inside is not plastic, it's wood, it's, it's really, it's really something else. And so we're gonna bring it into LMS, and where the LMS piano's gonna be repurposed someplace else, either donated or in the district. The reason I bring this up is that Gertrude Sokolsky is a Holocaust survivor. Um, seven years of her life, between the ages of eleven and eighteen, she was shuffled between seven different concentration camps. And she came to America as a refugee, and she made a wonderful life here. Um, she was, uh, I will send the, uh, interview out to the board and up host of that. She was as part of the Showa Project with Steven Spielberg. Um, and then that piano, that piano that was so important to her and to her family, which is so representative of what she overcame in her life and who she was, will now become our possession. And we're going to make it a point that there will be a plaque will be placed on that piano that recognize her and her family and the estate. And I just wanna, as for the purpose of the public record in today's fractured world, I just wanna point out that we're gonna take possession of what is basically a hollowed piece of property for this family, and they trust us with it. So I just wanted to say that out loud. And we're gonna have the family in, and we're gonna recognize them a bit more overtly at a future meeting. But I didn't wanna let the donation go unrecognized tonight. So thank you, and that's my report.
Thank you. That's a wonderful gift from the Skosk family. Um, Mr. Thomassevich, do you have anything else you need to report tonight?
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, that brings us to committee reports. I believe finance and planning was the only committee to meet, and you basically heard the contents of our committee meeting. Um, were there any other committee meetings I've met in the last week? I don't think so. Okay. Okay. So, um, that then brings us to, um, policy, I believe. Let me make sure I'm not skipping anything. Yes, okay. That brings us to item M, policy. Um, can I have, oh, this is second reading. Do we, is it, uh, roll call? Okay. Can I have a motion from Mr. Segal in a second? Mr. Park, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Wilds?
Yes.
Vice President Melman?
Yes.
And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on first reading of policy.
Uh, second.
A second reading, I apologize.
Thank you.
We have, uh, new business agenda items, A, B, C, and D. Um, can I have a motion from Mr. Zepka in a second, Ms. Wilds? And this is, uh, does anyone, would anyone like to pull any for discussion? Excuse me. Yes. Any for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
I apologize, she's excellent.
Ms. Wilds? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to next, uh, the second public comments portion on any matters related to the school district. I believe we have a speaker, oh, yes.
Please just provide your name and address.
Christian Choi, seventy-four, Meadowview Court, Leonia. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the school board, and Dr. Gates. I am Christian Choi, Eagle Scout candidate and senior patrol leader for Troop Seventy-One, Leonia. Tonight, I am coming in front of the board, and I'm very proud and happy to present to you this update report of the Leonia Veterans Banner Project, my Eagle Scout project. Please refer to slide two. I'm here to say a big thank you to all of you, the Leonia School community, and our community at large. This project started with borough approval on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. The last day for the veteran submission was March first, twenty-twenty-four. In less than two and a half months, we were able to receive fifty-six veteran submissions. And there was strong financial support from the community. I received sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars in contributions. This exceeded my thirteen thousand dollar target. I spent over one hundred hours on the project. I sent and received over five hundred emails, making sure that every question and every email was answered. My scouts and I visited over two hundred fifty resident homes. We handed out over four hundred advertisement flyers, and we went to just about every business along Broad Avenue. The advertisement for the program also went out on listserv, on the borough's website, Facebook, and through the school board and the recreation department's email system. The early email notification by the school was very helpful in getting the word out. These efforts paid off with a strong community response. Again, thank you to everybody. Please refer to slide three. Here are the names of the fifty-six veteran submissions. The remaining are on slide four as well. I learned a lot from this project. I learned that we have a very special community here in Leonia, and that we have very special people. Among the Leonia veterans who are recognized, there is a two-time Congressional Medal of Honor recipient, the rarest of distinctions. We have two Tuskegee airmen who graduated from Leonia High School. That unit was among the first African-American combat pilots, who later served with distinction in World War II. We have a soldier who was part of the Monuments Men, a unit that was responsible for finding and returning over five million pieces of art from the Nazis during World War II, including the famous Michelangelo, Michelangelo statue of Madonna and Child, and the altar piece in Ghent, Belgium. We also have a Marine who gave his life aboard the USS Arizona during the Pearl Harbor attacks. I learned that Leonians are very special. Please refer to slide five. Here are the two banner designs. Banners without sponsors will read "Thank You to All Veterans" on the bottom. Banners with sponsors will indicate who they were sponsored by. I plan to upload all the banners on the Leoniavetbanners.com website as soon as they are completed. Please refer to slide six. Again, we raised sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars. Wow. This far exceeded expectations. Here is the breakdown. Please refer to slide seven. The next steps, most importantly, mounting of the banners will be on May first, twenty-twenty-four, or earlier. All forty-six decorative light poles along Broad Avenue will have one banner each. The remaining ten banners will be in and around Wood Park and near the new municipal complex. I will coordinate with the DPW for mounting and the American Legion for priority of placement of the banners. Please refer to slide eight. Future years. Continuity and sustaining the program for future years is the key. I am asking that the American Legion continue on with the project. The surplus contributions that we raised will be dedicated for that purpose. Please refer to the next slide. All the veterans and their families whom I met had a personal story to tell. Many expressed their thanks to me for this project. Here are some of the responses. I will read the first one. "It is an honor to present this submission for our father, a great Leonian we lost in twenty-twenty-two. The most proud American Navy veteran I knew. Miss him every day, so this will keep his honor and memory alive. This is truly what it's all about." Next slide. "My goal was to make sure that this is just not my Eagle Scout project, but a community effort where everybody can participate. I learned a lot from the experience, learned a lot from our community, and about our community. I feel fortunate for this opportunity to be able to do this project for the town of Leonia and its veterans. So, so too everybody. I will close by saying again, thank you. Thank you also to our school's community and this board. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you."
Any questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to say this is amazing work, and, you know, it just goes so much well beyond being, we often thank our veterans for their service, but having this lasting recognition of the sacrifices, the time that they and their families have made is, is truly impressive. So, wonderful job for that.
Thank you.
For the banners, how, how long do they last? Is the plan to keep them flying, like, year-round, or do we take them down for the winter, or what was some of the thought process there?
So, the banners will, uh, go up on May in honor of Armed Forces Day and Memorial Day. Um, they will most likely, uh, go down in June because, uh, with due to the white flags going up, but they'll definitely go up in November in, uh, recognition of veterans there.
Uh, just wondering, um, uh, maybe there's a, in the public, uh, there's possibly, if there's more people in, among these, um, the veterans, uh, in the process that, and the, the, the.
Yeah, so hopefully, um, that after the banners go up, it may encourage people to, uh, want to submit their own veteran information. So the plan is to have different periods where people can submit banners, and, and then, um, the surplus contributions will also go towards the, uh, future banners.
Uh, that, that, um, just like, I'm missing, if people get some.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, just a quick question. On page three and four, um, all of those names, are those all veterans who were born and raised in Leonia, or is this from all over Bergen County, or?
They were, um, the criteria that I was sort of looking for was that they were associated with Leonia at some point in their lives. Some of, some of these veterans, they live, they live in different states right now, but they might have gone to, uh, high school in Leonia. So they were associated and affiliated with Leonia at some point in their lives. They, they fit that.
I'll just comment that real quickly. One of the names, if you notice, is Sky Thompson on that. Sky Thompson's wife usually sits right to the left of Ms. Wilds, Maria Thompson, who is a, her, that is her husband, he's a Navy pilot. So I just wanted to call him out loud for his service. Thank you.
Yeah, this is an absolutely wonderful project. Uh, it seems like it's well thought out. Um, I mean, even in terms of, you know, setting up with our American Legion and just, uh, it's just a great honor, um, and recognition of all the service members that, that have, have, you know, have provided, you know, from their own lives to serve the country. But thank you very much. This is a wonderful project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just agree with you. And kinda like the quote you read, just having the family talk about their loved ones is, is worth its weight in gold. So it's not just the sixteen thousand and stuff, it's just sharing those memories, and how you shared all the rankings, and what they meant to our country and stuff, is really the, you know, project here.
I also wanna add a comment. It is very impressive project, definitely, from many different aspects. Um, I remember you, uh, meeting us when you were about to kick off the, the project, and seemed to be, um, pretty ambitious goal, and, um, so I, I really wanna commend you for taking courage to take on a this big initiative. Uh, I'm pretty sure that you did it because you knew it was the right thing to do, and was such a meaningful thing, uh, to tackle on. And, and I'm also, um, very impressed and surprised by generosity of this community. Um, it's just amazing. I, I'm just happy again to be part of this community, and, um, I, I really appreciate you for taking the lead on this, being persistent, putting effort in, and it just, you know, everybody's so surprisingly happy. So, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hold it the whole time. Sorry. Incredible work, Christian. Really, uh, thank you. Um, I just had a question, I think, that echoes on Kim's question. So I know for the initial banners, it was, uh, residents, people that have been residents of Leonia at some point in time. Do you know if there's any thought to the future, like, for example, if a Leonia resident wants to remember a loved one who's a veteran, but they're the resident, not the family member? Does that make sense?
Yes, uh, that's, that's definitely, um, something that they can submit, and, um, we will, we will, um, take that into consideration. I remember meeting with the Rotary Club, and, um, one of the members of the Rotary Club, their uncle, I believe, had a, um, someone they, they served, but they weren't from Leonia. And I encouraged them, um, to submit their, uh, veteran.
Oh, okay.
That is something that can, that can be placed in the future, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you very much. We are still in the public comment section, so anyone wishing to speak on any district-related matter, not necessarily on the agenda, please step to the podium.
Briefly, Arthur's at one twenty-five, Relities. The tenant that we, uh, rent the little school theater to, I noticed that there's a big, there's a significant jump, um, but there's also an increase in numbers of days rented. So, has there been an increase in the rate, or is that increase strictly because there's an extra day that they're renting the, uh, the little theater? That's the question.
Yeah, that's it. Just wanna know whether we had a rate increase, or whether it's just, uh, an additional day.
Yeah, so all use of facilities is dictated by our policy as far as rates. Uh, pretty much the use of a specific, whether it's the gym, the little theater, is, is one price per day. Um, as, if there's any custodial needs, that's based on hours, which is also the hourly rate is dictated by our policy. So you'll see, um, if there is more days in that month, the, the rental fee will go up, and if there is more hours needed, the custodial hours will go up.
It's basically just unit, number of units increased on the cost line?
Correct.
Thank you.
Jordan Ziegler, two oh on Christie Street, your liaison as well. Uh, very good presentation, Mr. Thomassevich. I wish we had your money over at the borough, uh, cause our tax, your taxes are gonna go up a little bit. We're not gonna, unfortunately, not provide that amount of relief. Uh, the only update I wanna provide, cause I couldn't email Dr. Gates this morning, I apologize. I presented on the Broad Avenue Planters last night at the, uh, mayor and council meeting for the, I don't know how much time. Uh, the council is happy with the presentation at this point. Uh, we will formally approve it via resolution. is happy with the presentation at this point. Uh, we will formally approve it via resolution on April first, and then as soon as that's approved, then the planters can go back in front of the retaining wall on Broad Avenue. I am very happy to not have to talk about this again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one else from the public, um, that brings us to, technically on the agenda is closed session, and that would only be if anyone from the board has any questions on item Q, approval of personnel items. If anyone has any questions, then we will, we will go into closed, otherwise, we'll proceed on to item Q. Okay, seeing no comments or questions. Um, can I have a motion on item Q? Mr. Park, in a second? Uh, Dr. Meester, and roll call, please.
Ms. Choi?
Yes.
Dr. Meester?
Yes.
Ms. Molina?
Yes, Philip Stingman is, yes.
Mr. Park?
Yes.
Ms. Zepka?
Yes.
Mr. Segal? Ms. Wilds? Vice President Melman? And President Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries on personnel items.
Thank you. And can I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Park, in a second, Mr. Zepka, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or sanctions? Okay, meeting is adjourned at eight forty-one. Thank you, everyone.